Are we live?
Trying. We'll see if the internet cooperates.
Okay. Live, alright. Good evening, welcome to the Super School Board regular meeting for a Thursday, July 22nd, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
The pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call upon everyone, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sir.
First and second, any discussion? Did we get the minutes linked in yet, or are we still working? Alright, if there's no discussion, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I'd like to, as long as we can recognize any visitors who would wish to speak. If no one wishes to speak, that will move on. Just a reminder to those who are watching at home that you're welcome to send an email and I will happily read your email during our next meeting. You can send it to lesecadistrict@gmail.com or you're welcome to come in person and use our open forum to speak. Alright, so we have some items on the agenda for the organization of the school board. First one is to designate our medical facilities, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, now we designate. We seek a male clinic as a medical facility for the 21, 22 school year.
Do we first and a second, any discussion? Obviously, it's just a formality that we do on a annual basis. No further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion? For item C, which is the consideration for resolution for investment in payment of claims. Whoever makes this motion gets to read that resolution.
I'll make it.
Alright, you want to read the resolution then?
Okay.
Item B.
Is that one with this?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Elizabeth Berry, Director of Business Services, will be authorized to make payment prior to board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting without loss to the district of discount privileges. And furthermore, Ms. Berry is authorized to initiate and transact electronic fund transfers for the purpose of investment of excess monies and for payment of bond principal interest. So the authority is delegated pursuant to Minnesota statutes 1979, section 471.38, subdivision 3, and Minnesota statutes 1979, section 123.35, subdivision 5.
Alright, we have a first and a second, and since this is a resolution, would we do a roll call then? Yes? Any further discussion? Alright, now I'll call for a vote, Grant.
Dave.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Linking up with names. Julie is yes. Katie.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Adita.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion into item C, consideration of support services?
I'll need to do that.
Maybe just summarize.
I'll make the motion that we are approving various things under the guidance of the superintendent for petty cash, for payments of memberships, reimbursing the school board of member expenses, non-certain type personnel wages and salaries, and signatures for items coupled by the school board, various other things to be referred to from the minutes.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
Sir.
First and a second, any discussion? Alright, hearing that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. This next one, I think Dave is for you. It says, aye, Dave Dunn, so.
Is that the long one?
Yeah, the consideration of resolution for machine signed signatures, so if you are prepared to make your motion, I will make mine.
I'll make that motion. This is for the resolution for machine signed signatures. Aye, Dave Dunn, clerk of the school board of any kind of district, February 29th. You hereby certify that at regular meeting of the school board of any kind of school district, you legally and regularly call and tell that the central building, second floor conference room of the Minnesota. On the 22nd day of July, 1921, there being a quorum of said board presence, the following was the unanimous path that appears from the records of said school district and is known for force and effect. Be resolved that First National Bank, Raam Bank of Mosica, and the MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank, the significant of this corporation, be and get hereby requested, authorized, and directed to honor checks, drafts, and other orders for payment of money drawn in this school district's name, including those drawn to the individual order of any person or persons whose names, whose name or names appear thereon, has signer or signers thereof, when bearing or according to their the facsimile signature or signatures of A3 of the following. Okay, Raam Bank, the First National Bank, and the MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank shall be entitled to honoring and charge this school district for such checks, drafts, and other orders, regardless of by what means the facsimile signature or signatures thereon may have been affixed thereto. If such facsimile signature or signature be found, the facsimile specimens duly certified to or filed with First National Bank, Raam Bank of Mosica, and the MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank by the clerk or other officer of this school district. Be further resolved that any and all resolutions heretofore adopted by the school board of this school district and certified to Raam Bank, First National Bank, and MSD Liquid Asset Fund slash US Bank, as governing the duration of this school district's account counts with it, be and hereby continue in full force and effect, except as the same may be supplemented or modified by the foregoing part of this resolution. In witness thereof, I have here unto describe, subscribe my name as clerk of said school district, this 22nd day of July, 2021, Dave Dunn, school board.
Thank you. Is that where you got one? Would anyone like to second that motion? Alright, we have a first and a second, for the consideration of resolution for machine signed signatures, any discussion? Alright, hearing that, I'll call for a vote, this is a resolution, so I will do a roll call, Grant.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Julie is yes. Katie.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
And Adita.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimous. Alright, moving on then to payment of claims, and Director Shepherd, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I review the June account table and debt of claims, so I make a motion to approve those for a total amount of $1,504,24.80 for June, along with payroll of $827,242.
Do we have a first and a second, any discussion? Alright, hearing that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Do we have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing that, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Alright, we can take a break from that for a minute, everybody's ampering, I know. I will begin with the Super Grand Tenet Report.
Very good, thank you, I don't know if I can use as many words as Dave did. But we'll get moving. So as you can tell by the series of action items we have this evening, you know, summer work is really busy, we have a lot going on, a lot of things to do to get prepared for the next school year, which is what you're seeing a lot in your committee reports, you're seeing a lot of approvals coming up this evening. And one thing that I do want to mention to our community, anybody might be watching too as a school board, you know, we have decided that our fall plan, our COVID plan is on the website and is, we're not waiting for any new information at this point. You know, we are in a position where we're recommending masks to anybody who's unvaccinated, but we're not going to be requiring or enforcing any of that in our buildings. Same thing with the quarantine procedure, if we have a student who is exposed to a positive case, we'll notify the family, we'll do our contact tracing, we'll share what the CDC recommends if we're unvaccinated individuals, and then we'll move on with our day and the families will make their decision, assuming everyone's symptom free moving forward. So I have just had a few questions that have come up in the last few days about when we're going to be deciding, and I want to remind everybody that we already have, and nothing's expected to change between now and when school starts from an overall procedure and policy perspective. If something changes locally, we have a significant outbreak in our community, we'll have to make an appropriate decision, obviously. Right now is not an issue, it's not something that we're seeing a lot of right now, our summer school has gone on without masks and without any other restrictions, and we're doing fine. So I don't, I don't want to give the impression that we're waiting for any new information, we're not. And then as, and some of the American Pediatrics Association and CDC conversations that have happened in the media, that's a national conversation. What's happening locally in Mosica is not requiring that level of restriction, part of that is that they're not going to require us to do so, so we're going to move forward with what's appropriate for us. I just wanted to mention that before I get into the rest of the documents, since it has come up a few times for that.
Could you remind everyone what the plan is for school, like the five days a week?
We're in school full time.
Yep.
Yeah, we're in school full time, you know, regular calendar, regular transportation procedures. I am preparing a kind of a midsummer, late summer update to send out to families, which will probably go out Monday morning at this point, with transportation side of information, kind of reminders about that. We are planning on a regular school year coming back this fall with activities, so thank you, looking forward to that. Very good. Alright, last time we had a chance to get together in our work session, if you just maybe take one and pass it along there, we talked about the next step of our strategic planning being a three-year board agenda, not taking that operational plan that I shared with you, the administration is working on, and then really developing a three-year board agenda for what are some of the things that the board is working on over the next few years to meet some of the goals of our strategic plan. And so what I've prepared for you tonight to consider, this is not something we have to vote on, it's not something we formally approve, it's just more of a feedback input, get ourselves working type process. And so what I did is I took the ideas that you all were able to come up with in our last work session, and I tried to create them into more action statements about what it is we're going to be doing in the next few years. And so, for example, if we focus on the area of student achievement, one of the things that came up was engaging the DAP committee and monitor student assessment, making sure that we have more people joining that committee and finding out what's going on. So engaging in that as a school board, something to be working on. Monitoring the legislative process and reports by administration to stand for any changes in academic standards, something that's an action item that the board can do by staying engaged and monitoring those things. Supporting the appropriate pathways expansion is something. So you'll notice this is very, almost identical to what you had come up with in our last conversation, transferred though to more of an action state, hopefully consensus or summary, I don't know what we're going to be working on. Then I took the, I put almost everything in 21, 22, knowing that then we'll see what the next few years come as we get used to this way of working, how that comes. But for example, in 22, 23, you're going to want to review the vision card results and monitor the resource allocation to support student growth. So what we're going to get to, my goals here about student achievement is going to be based on that vision card. So the board's role is going to be to really reviewing and monitoring that vision card and saying, we're in progress or we're still in baseline, what happened and what didn't happen, but we need to go forward to hold myself and all of our team accountable for the work, kind of is what the board's job is in the process. As we look in student support, one thing to just point out there, you know, for example, we talked to great length about our mental health, what we're going to do with mental health, so I tried to summarize that, you know, monitor and communicate about our work to support the mental health of staff and students, and that's really the board's job, right? Monitor it and communicate to our community what we are doing, and then back to us what we could be doing better, so we continue to be working through it that way. So hopefully that makes sense as you read through this document, it's really designed to be more of an action item type document, so you really, as board members, can see, what am I doing here as a board member around these ideas? And the nice part about this document not being something we have to formally approve is that you can look at it, you can give me feedback, we can adjust this over the next several weeks and school years we need to, because what this will drive me towards, the next piece that I want to share with you, and you can just take one and pass it around, is I'll be taking then this board agenda, then I'm taking, combined with the operational plan that we just talked about, to create a district vision card in each of our areas, which really says vision statements. And so, for example, the district vision statement in student achievement is going to say something along the lines of, we're going to increase student achievement for all students. And then what's the measurement going to be? Well, whether it's going to be graduation rate, whether it's going to be MCA test, we've decided we want to do it that, we have options, right? And that'll be based on our World Best Workforce Plan, we already have those things in place, we're not making them up. But then we're really going to say, if we have 89% of students graduating on time at our high school right now, that's the baseline. The vision is 97, let's say, but progress is 93. So I can truly come to you in the next year as a school board and say, we've made progress towards this goal where we haven't, and then what do we need to do differently working for it? Graduation rate is maybe not the best example, because it's not something you can tweak a lot during the school year, but there are some things like a fast food assessment, like our attendance procedures, like those kind of things that we can monitor throughout the school year, to make sure we're supporting students. Because as we talked about in the work session, I tend to come and talk about all things we're doing in each of the areas, but I'm looking forward to evolving to this school year is, in this area, this is the primary, and that hopefully will help you as a school board stay more informed on the actual data that goes along with it. I met with principals this last Monday, and so their job in August would be to get with their teams and departments and do, based on our district vision card, a department or building vision card, which then lead to a grid level vision card for your departments, and then they'll just connect the strategic plan all the way down to everybody in the staff. And so I'm looking forward to how that all develops. So the point of this part of the report is I really just update you where in that process, and give you some visuals of what it looks like, but also give you a copy in hand, and electronically I'll put it in your school board folder of this three-year agenda, so over the next few weeks, if you have a chance to look at it and have ideas or suggestions or thoughts that you think we could do differently, and keep in mind, this is different than your school board annual goals that you're doing, because those will be something that'll be more, some development as individuals, or thinking, oh, we're going to focus on mental health, or focus on facilities, wherever that might be, those are different, two different things, the action to go along with it. So any questions on that right now, open that up for questions at this point?
Well, like obviously how you have it right now, almost each of these three years reads very similarly, or almost, so obviously we can be tweaking these things, like this is just kind of the beginning to get us.
Right, and so next year, what I'll propose to you, it'll say, what, 22, 23, 24, 25.
Okay.
And so as we evolve, what we don't have yet is a history of the last two years of vision cards to base on what the next years will be, so it almost has to be a little bit repetitive to start.
Yeah.
Until we find out what is working, what isn't, so we can really seek out what that next vision is going to be.
Right, well, and I assume like as our year goes on and we each look at what we're doing this year, it might inform what needs to happen next year, or in the next two years, or not.
Absolutely, right, and then hopefully we'll relatively seamlessly move into our next five years strategic plan, because we've got some really strong data to say, we need to keep focusing in this area, or we've made some significant progress, but we're falling behind here, how do we tweak our strategic plan moving forward?
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
Very good, thank you. And then the other thing that I wanted to share with you tonight in this report, from a document perspective, is last time we've had in our work session, I did share with you some of my ideas, and I would love to this evening then formally propose to you on my annual goals for 21, 22, which then would be on the agenda for your consideration to approve in our action items. And the first of which, goal number one, is really tying to that vision card and student achievement. And so the way this is written is, the superintendent will lead the district in preparing vision cards based upon goals to improve student achievement. These vision cards will include measurable outcome goals for student progress, and then I'll be measured based on your work with me, or achieving progress, the minimum of I put a minimum of four or six to those areas, and we can decide as the year goes on if that's appropriate or not, as I work with that team. We want to stretch ourselves and create, you know, really solid performance goals, understanding that if we do that, then how do you measure, right? How do you make that appropriate? So one thing I find is, when you get to vision, if you sit in vision for a year or two in a row in one area, it's time to make that goal stronger. So you really have to set yourself up going forward, is that be the first one? Goal number two I would propose would be kind of to continue with the community engagement part of the goal. I did make a little bit more emphasis on community engagement meetings, getting out at events, and really trying to know some more people as part of this goal, which just the nature of the pandemic kind of hindered some of that this last school year, but I did get a chance to meet a lot of people internally, so looking forward then to balance that out over the course of the next school year. Facilities planning will continue to be a goal, the way it's looking at this is, and I need to, I do need to change a little language there, because by January 1, 2021, that's now in the past tense, I forgot to change that date.
It's going to have to be 2022.
Right, but continue to work with the school board, facilities committee, and the entire board for the next steps of facilities planning, and really that, as I visited with the facilities committee last night, which I'll share with you here later on, but for now, I'll just mention that, you know, we do have some decisions to make, probably in the next six months or so, to decide what the next steps are going to be. You don't have to decide the outcome, decide what our next steps are going to be towards that goal, and so that's part of this goal for me to leave this here. And then the fourth one is just, like we talked about last time, I wanted to add a personal professional goal for me on there, and as I begin, you know, the doctoral program here this fall, focusing on district organizational leadership, you know, one of the ways that I think the board will be able to get some value out of that through the processes, is in our evaluation committee or even at the board, you know, what kind of things are you talking about? What kind of things are you learning that we can bring back to the district? Much like if I send a principal to a conference, you know, what's going to be the value to the district? Now, this is more of a personal thing, but it also is going to value the district, provide value to the district, and so it's, I think I would appreciate continued board conversation about, because then it helps me also understand how am I applying this? It's not just an abstract learning, but I may not be able to see it, because somebody in the board might be able to say, that's interesting, why don't we think about this? Or you talk to these folks about that process, but I may not always make that connection with. So as much as that seems very personal versus district, well, I think it will value the district quite a bit, so I want to include that in my goals. So that's the goals I'm proposing for my next year, and work with us, as well as all obviously the day-to-day work that we do nonstop, and then I would, that will be for your consideration for the other action items. And then I would obviously entertain questions now.
They're really good, concrete goals, so that you can show evidence of, yeah, that are measurable, so I appreciate that.
Just tying in with where we're moving as a district. Oh, these are really cool.
Yeah, one of the things that I think is, I learned this year with our team, was there's a little bit of à la carte, of I'm bringing a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and what I really look forward to this year is, is some things really coming together. Vision cards becoming a universal language that we use, and so, yeah, it's part of how we hold each other accountable as a board, as an administration, with our staff, with our students, and so, but that ties into my goals, ties into your goals, ties it, we're all kind of working from the same general format, and it doesn't feel so à la carte anymore, it all ties together. That's kind of what we're moving towards this next year, so I appreciate that feedback.
I also, I really like your specific goal about student achievement, I really think that's, it's time to really focus on that this year. I mean, obviously we have multiple areas to focus on, but I like that that's your main goals, so.
Any other comments? Thank you. Alright, then we'll move on to our man's report from Elizabeth.
Thank you for your time, I do have a few items for you this evening. A couple more specific to the board agenda, I just want to give you a little bit more information, but absolutely, when it comes to the approval of that item, if you have further questions down the road, please don't hesitate to ask. A little bit regarding the milk bids that we did receive, so Ross Larson, the Food Service Director, and I did receive and open the bids on this past Tuesday. As you can see from the sheet, we thought there would be a potential of three vendors in our area that would be interested in bidding. We did not receive a bid from Kemp's, we did receive information from Prairie Farms, but they just, they let us know in the bid proposal that they wouldn't be able to meet the times that we had specified, but would like us to keep them in mind for the future. And so that did lead us to looking at Hastings Co-op Creamery. Even though they were the only bid, I did ask Ross just to make sure that at least that pricing was at least in line with just the general marketing, they felt very comfortable, so I just didn't want to alarm anybody if we only had one set of bids, that those numbers were not out of the ordinary, they were very competitive, and we are very comfortable moving forward, even though there was only one bid with that.
And that was regarding the milk bid process. And just want to speak a little bit to the long-term facility maintenance process, you're seeing a couple more items in addition to the information we spoke to in June. So in June, that's really more our district process of giving you the full layout, all of the details behind the 10-year plan that we create. Per Minnesota rules, we need to now obviously use their forums, so you're seeing a little bit different format with the expenditures, a revenue spreadsheet that they like us to use, specific statements of assurance, and then a specific school board resolution. So there's those four pieces that the Department of Education requires from each school district to move over with their long-term facility maintenance plan, and that's all due by July 30th, so that's why you're seeing all of those documents now. And really what this is doing is actually setting up our levy process, this is just kind of the starting point, this is where we're at in our summer process, we're going to be building our levy. And as a reminder, I know board members know probably more than our community, but just again, being with transparency, this is really generating revenue for 22, 23 school year. We've already created our levy authority for the current year that we're in, this summer process is really building that 22, 23 school year, and that's, this LTFM Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan is building that for following years to come. We did have a slight change in third-party payment vendors, so if you are a user of Infinite Campus, and you may be making payments online, our prior vendor was Vanco, and Infinite Campus has made a switch to a company called Payrex. And so they've given districts time to actually make that transition, they started rolling this out in late spring, but gave districts through the end of July to actually make the transfer. So if you are a user of this system, you personally should not see any difference behind the scenes. We made that transfer actually just yesterday, and we pushed a notification out to the parent portal that just speaks a little bit to that, that if you had, the only difference for you right now is all of your prior maybe saved financial information in there, you know, if you had a card or a bank account connected to your fee payments, that was wiped out, because again, that was with Vanco, the prior vendor, and for security purposes, that is all gone, and you would just need to re-enter that for Payrex, it would just be the one-time entry, and then you're good to go. So you shouldn't see, as a user, you should not see any change, but I just wanted to let the board know that there is just that a little bit behind the scenes change when, if and when you have to get into a parent portal and start making payments for fees. The last little bit of information I wanted to share with everybody, and again, it's more a community information piece as well, is if you have not gotten so already, household letters for free and reduced app. household letters for free and reduced applications should be out in the mail or have already been received in the mail. Just a reminder, moving forward for this year currently, all meals, your first meal, will be free because of the waivers through the federal government. So we will have free meals again. But please note that those free and reduced applications are extremely important to school districts across the nation. That drives a lot of funding for us personally. We're able to receive benefits as a school district based on our free and reduced count. And then also personally for individuals, kind of teeing up for fall sports registration that's going to be happening in the next couple of weeks. That can also be a benefit to families as well, as if they have a current free and reduced application on file, you can get potential discounts on participation fees. And there's also a program out there, most families, if you were on free and reduced before, have already been accessing this, but again, moving forward, you're going to need to have an updated application. It's called the PEBT program. Some of you may or may not have heard of that, and that's through the Department of Human Services. It's not through the district, but they obtain the information from us on that free and reduced population. And individuals, families are able to receive benefits of basically a debit card for them to purchase food outside of the school day for their families, and it is all based on free and reduced status. So again, just a reminder that those forms are extremely important, both personally and through the school district as well. They are available on the website if you do want to take a look as well. So under Departments and Food Service, there's a section called Free and Reduced Applications. You can also obtain them there. That's all I had. Any questions for anybody?
I don't think so. All right, thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to committee and board member reports. Adina, you want to start us off? Okay. Let's not tell you. Yeah, Charlie.
Julie and I met at a meeting with the WBA here the other day. Talked a little bit about the school calendar and how it's been to the associations. Very cordial.
We just had the finance, not the finance, but the facilities yesterday, and we're just making choices, kind of looking where we're at for future steps down the district. Where we're looking at for facilities and then updates about what's going on. I came in late for that, the kind of what's going on out of the high school and the...
Windows and Hartley.
Yeah.
Parking lot, driveway repairs of this.
Yep.
We're done with the track at the high school. Colin did say that, I'm probably remembering wrong here, but most everything will get done, but some of it's been delayed because of materials, labor shortages, things like that.
Then we had a policy meeting, and it was just a real quick meeting. We didn't have a lot, but it was just reviewing, going over policies with the school district admin and the superintendent selection and contracts, code of ethics, so. No, it was, no, no. But no, it's just a nice piece of snow, kind of drivers behind city players.
Yeah, I would just add that negotiations that are being referred is a reminder to families that this year we don't have the early outs. We've eliminated early outs this year, and instead we added three teacher workdays. And so that's kind of what we talked about, what they're going to do on those extra days, and also how throughout the course of the year, they'll still get their PLC time, their prep time, their personal development time.
Yeah, I always add that that calendar is on the website, and much like I talked about with our masking, we're not waiting for any new information. That is up there, so folks can plan on 21.
Yes, yeah, so we'll start September 7th, so. And then we really haven't met as a legislative committee for a while, but I don't think we've talked about since this all, since our last meeting, that the legislature did finally approve, what is it, 2% and 2 points?
2.45 in the first year and 2% in the second.
Yes, so everyone's very pleased about that. The other thing that was, one of our goals was a secure mandate, so that was also good. So it definitely is, was a legislative session that is beneficial to school districts, so I'll put it that way. So I just wanted to give that kind of update. And then we did meet as a superintendent evaluation committee because we're kind of talking about all that stuff tonight. Yeah.
I, mine was already covered, otherwise I missed a couple.
Edie already talked a little bit about the policy committee and facilities. We just talked a little bit about facilities. I did watch an MSBA webinar, I think it was maybe last Thursday, called Back to School. And they talked about, most of them was about COVID-related issues. Did anybody else happen to watch that? Okay. Like vaccinations, can you require vaccinations when you can't require vaccinations? Can you ask if somebody's vaccinated, and you can't ask if someone's vaccinated? A lot of this was legal-type information. Yeah, it was actually put on my two gals that represented a legal firm in the Twin Cities. Talked about wearing masks, not wearing masks. And at the end, they did talk a little bit about strictly banks, which is something we don't have. And I believe it's something the MSBA recommends that we, for some good reasons, that we don't have. So that was, that was about an hour long, or an hour, I guess, but it was, so I said, fine. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I think all the policies, committee meetings was already covered. I did, I think all of us maybe get the MSBA monthly magazine. The last one that came out, I still had an article in the middle on 10 different points of things to do that I, 10 minutes to read, I would recommend you guys read it. It was very helpful, it was good to read to say, "That makes a lot of sense."
Were there some things in particular that you really liked in the article?
They, one of the, I think that one of the topics was on if potentially contentious issues come up, how do you deal with those, and how do you keep working for? There's a lot of good pointers that apply to that, but also just to try to really function that.
When you get to the phase three training from MSBA, they talk a lot about that. So, that's very silent. That was good.
I am surprised, I just thought about today that they're re-offering 1 and 2, but they're still not.
Yeah.
They're still. I haven't seen 3 or 4 yet.
Those aren't offered as often, so, yeah, 1 and 2 is offering more than 3 and 4. 3 and 4 are really fun, they kind of actually did offer them more often. Yeah. 1 and 2 is kind of more like, eh, yeah, let's have to do that. Eric, was there anything else facilities-wise that you wanted to add on to, kind of alluded to a little bit in your report?
Yeah, I think the, I think the key point is, we're monitoring our facilities. We're making sure we're maintaining and doing the projects that we need to keep up with right now. What we're looking at right now is what some of our long-term plans are going to be for some of our buildings, specifically Hartley, and what the next plans are with that, as we see what the maintenance plan are, what we're monitoring very closely, how the market is, is having and flowing right now, what construction costs are doing. And so nothing new is just being made right now. We started last night to just look at a very loose draft of what our next outline could be of actions, which we'll bring to the whole board, potentially through those fall workshops that we talked about previously. And the other thing, just to piggyback a little bit on what David mentioned before, is yeah, we do have some projects that are getting delayed because of materials and/or labor, but everything will be done as of this moment. Nothing's looking like it won't be done in a way that would impact programming. So for our activities and our programming for the fall, we're looking to be ready to go with the projects we've got done. It's causing frustration for us because we want things to be done on time, but we're not in the position where things are going to be impacting what we can do with kids. And so that's a positive way, positive.
I think along those lines, as I understand, the crosswalk, which is obviously not a school district thing, although it benefits us, that was delayed also, but it should be done by the beginning of the school year, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. What they have, the significant work to finish is actually the signal.
Yeah, I heard something, I think I talked to Mike Anderson, and he had said that the wrong thing got ordered, so we had to reorder it, so, yeah. But he said it'll be done, it'll be ready by the beginning of the school year, so.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, go.
Nice, that does look nice, but it's not.
I was just wondering why the walk is not straight.
I think because we, on the west, this is my guess, on the west side, they wanted to line up front doors, but on the east side, they have to line up a sidewalk that's already there. So that's why, just because I wondered the same thing.
Is that in the plan, or they just?
No, I think that was, I think that was in the plan.
That would make sense.
It's got a little bit of a wiggle in it, so.
More visually interesting? Make it more fun when you're out there blowing the snow off, like, oh, sorry, you're off. Lindsay, you want to share anything on student council this summer?
Well, student council hasn't really been meeting. I think we'll start that in the fall when school starts. But there's a lot of stuff going on at the high school. There's sports are meeting almost every day, all the different sports. Volleyball, boys and girls basketball, football is probably meeting.
Cross-country.
Cross-country. There are a lot of community ed events happening. I know that the pool is open, and they have community ed tennis, and I think there's a football camp next week. And, what else? Oh, I did have some. I wrote it down. So, I heard from some students that they want to know more about school next fall, and you kind of touched on this already, and they just kind of want to know what it'll look like, and if distance learning will be an option for students once school starts. And they say it's hard to find the schedule on the website, and so is it possible to send out another announcement, and you kind of said you were going to, but is it possible to be like a Twitter or a Facebook type of announcement so that students are reaching it?
Do you mean like their class schedules, or their, or just like your calendar?
Yeah, just like the calendar. And if, like if Mondays are going to be a no-school day, but.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But no, thank you for that, that's good.
Want to address the distance learning part of your question?
Yeah, you know, the short, the short version is, no, we're not going to be doing any distance learning this fall as we come back to school. Students that want to take some online classes, we'll work with them through our Apex or through our Southwest Metro vendors like we always have with that. But it's not going to be something that we're going to be doing just in general.
Not in district-wide.
Not in district-wide process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Did you want to start us off with any recognitions or some feedback?
Yes, I guess. I want to recognize all of the coaches and employees and directors that are working with the students right now this summer to get us prepared for the fall because they're spending a lot of time and dedication to get us prepared. And so I just want to appreciate their time this summer.
Definitely. Thank you.
I had two things. I also saw that the, one of the jazz groups was at the opening ceremony to the fair, so that was nice to see and nice to have representation of that. So, I did recognize and thank you for those students who did that. Also, our WESCA athletes, who have again been in the news. Marcus Hampton got another track award recently, actually did shelves of things. So congratulations to him. And Shane Strike, who was a prior from a few years, has been in the news a lot for running, almost making the Olympics, but not quite, but yes, he's gotten some other things that he's doing, so. Nice to see.
Yeah, so we can add to that, I can't think of the person right now, our last name is Chip, but.
Alexis.
Next to, and she's on the Olympic era volleyball team, which is really cool. Same way. I just found out and confirmed that the fair, that we are going to have a marching classic this year. It's going to be on Saturday, September 18th. The marching classic committee, after taking a year off because of COVID, has got things going. I know it was a little bit of a worry that maybe since there was a year break in there, you know, you never know if you can get it going again. Well, it is going again, and we are going to have it like normal. And I also just want to recognize, Edna Burns has been the chairperson for that for a long, long time. Mary Williams has been the treasurer and secretary literally forever. Les Talugan has been, I think, since the very start. So, thanks to that committee for getting the classic going again, and hopefully it'll be another good one.
For me, it's actually community-wide. I spent a lot of time at the fair with another organization, Parkets and Cars. And I'll tell you what, people do want to be out, and it was very obviously that on the fair parking lots, it would fall every single night, so that was good to see. So people were out and about, and I also worked a little time a little bit. And the amount of people over there that said that they were at the fair over here was extreme. There were a lot of people at here, a lot of students too. So, it's just, it's awesome that we get to be out in the community and see everything that kids are doing at 4A and everything else that they had at the fair, so.
Speaking of that, I want to thank Caitlin for all her hours that she put in at the fair, covering up some you could not sit at the board table, so thank you so much, Caitlin. But I have a couple other things. I know I saw a social media post saying that our WESCA Family Education Center received a four-star parent-aware rating for their pre-teen program, so congratulations to them. And then I also want to recognize the work of Jenny Tanya and I'm sure others for our new website layout that just launched, it looks awesome. I know there's some tweaks yet, that needs to be, I think it happened, but it looks, it's very eye-catching, so.
I was just going to kind of bounce off of Scott with the fair too. It was, when Eric and I were there, we had young kids coming up that had been showing rabbits and cows and chickens, and they were really excited. And then the next time, I was able to talk with Jake Hager, and it was nice to see people on a different level, more relaxed, you could get to know each other, and just found out some funny things about each other. So it was a lot of connecting, yeah.
So what were those?
Sign up to work with Jake.
Yeah, there you go. But he's got some cool tattoos. But yeah, no, it was cool. And another, when you said other communities, there was a teacher coming up from Hartland, Ellendale, Geneva with her dad, and she was telling us how they were connecting with the sports that they can't provide, they connect with us and co-op with that. So she was really proud of that, yeah, it was nice, good time.
Yeah, I got a couple grandsons that were able to go to a football camp, you know, the people that put that all the way out, they were practicing basketball at 6:00 in the morning, some kids that are getting up to business. And of course, the fair and no masks and everything else, it's been a good comeback. So I think we're looking forward to this fall coming up. Think we'll be back one month or so.
I think everything was like what I wanted to say, but I think the food was awesome.
You helped a lot of businesses.
That's okay, we didn't have room in the party last fall, they were home.
They were.
Yeah, which is good. All right, awesome, so we can then move on to our action items. And we do not have any gifts and donations this month, that's for sure, so we can take off item A. And then we'll acknowledge the following teachers who have obtained tenure. David Bloom, Lori Pupsey, Robert Nord, Andrea Rieger, Mackenzie Bolz, Jessica Stenlund, Molly Schmidt, Savannah Tocum, Diane Wirth, Angela Andring, Jenna Shainrock, and Diane Laubery. So congratulations to them, happy to have them here in our district and having to choose tenure. Item C, can I get a motion? It looks like there's a resolution on that, sure. Elizabeth, just, we're supposed to read that shorter part?
Yes, or you can, the, basically in summary, right underneath the item C, the little bit of the narrative, you could absolutely read that as well, because that speaks exactly to the resolution.
Okay, so does everyone take motion, agree? So does everyone make a motion, read, make, make the resolution however you want.
I'll make the motion. Eight hundred and fifty. Just that, okay. Approved resolution in conjunction with ten year long, long-term facilities maintenance, LTFM expenditure revenue plans. Whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota statutes 123B point five nine five subdivision four states. A school district must annually adopt an approved ten-year facility plan by July 31st before commissioner approval. Whereas the school district has developed a ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistently for this fall.
You make the motion.
You recommend a approval.
All right, I have a first, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Scott can have the second. Uh, first and a second, any discussion or any other questions for Elizabeth about our long-term facilities maintenance plan?
I'll only make a comment, but I know in our finance committee, we looked over that with some detail a month or so ago. So we've gotten through some of that details and raised a lot of problems.
What?
Is that something we have to do every year then to come up with a ten-year?
Yeah, yeah. So it's just whatever the update really has been since they did it last year, you know?
And I'm hoping we can kind of dive a little deeper into this ten-year, doing the ten-year plan, doing the five-year plan as part of our workshops this fall. So we can kind of understand more what goes into those. All right, if there is no further discussion or questions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Oh, it's a resolution. I gotta do a roll call, I suppose. Yes. All right, never mind. When I call your name, please give a vote.
Yes.
Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julia is yes. Katie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And Adita?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, motion carries unanimous. All right, can I get a motion on the LTFM statement of assurance?
I'll make a motion to approve the LTFM statement of assurance.
First and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item E about the online conveniences.
I make a motion to approve writing online conveniences, keep the five patterns of 2021.
First and a second. Any discussion? I think it's cool that we're able to keep pointing this thing. So I definitely encourage us people to use it.
This at least, I think the second or the third year maybe we've been doing more.
Oh, it's been like five years or more. It's been quite a while, so. Yep. All right, enough of the discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And I get a motion for item F about our designated MSHSL representatives. Or do we need, is this a motion? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we make a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint, uh, designate MSHSL representatives as stew.
We have a school board rep, Katie. Enjoy that job. Uh, school representative Eric Hudson, boy sports, Joe Headivar, girl sports, Joan Conway, speech activities, Karen Mark Anderson, and music activities, Devin Collins. All right, so I have, thank you. First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item G?
I'll make a motion to approve the Minnesota School Boards Association renewal of MSBA policy service.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item H about school handbooks?
I'll make a motion where we, we have approved the 2021, 2022 school.
Yeah, currently we have, uh, these will be ALC Hartley, special ed activities, and J.C. High School. Are we just missing one or is there?
We're just missing this at this point. And that's just a matter of timing of vacations that we quite did in this week. So apologize for that.
Yep, that's fine. Appreciate everyone getting to a little earlier than, that's nice. All right, enough of the discussion then. I will.
Of course, is it, what happens before they get here? I assume it's all the buildings and the administration there and the staff there go through them all and then then you will bring those.
Correct. Yeah, that's the process. And more often than not, it's just, what's the small change this year versus any other year? They're relatively weather played in a lot of areas, but we do review that every year and make sure.
Okay, Hartley, I had a question about the their end times of Mr. Ryan. It's slightly two minutes different in a couple of different spots. And so I just emailed him a question about that. And he's like, you're right, that was weird. So they they appreciate the feedback too. So it always takes a different size, so. All right, if there's no further discussion then, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then, um, does everyone have a copy of our 2021, 2022 school board goals? Or Caitlin, do you have a holdup or? Um, I did ask Eric for earlier so I could read. Like, this is kind of what we went over last at our July workshop. Um, so goal number one, uh, will be for student staff support. Continue to gain a deeper understanding of the mental health of students and staff and be informed of what is happening throughout our district. And then our objective or measure will be receive regular updates from our mental health staff, invite them to attend board meetings and receive regular updates from our psych and schools administrators and invite them to board meetings. Um, goal number two, community engagement. Uh, work with world on engaging community, up until facilities updates and continue being active in our buildings, being visible, accessible to our students. And then objectives and measurements, um, community events regarding mental health or film, like a film showing and then have a community survey and outreach regarding Hartley. Uh, goal number three, board training and invest in ongoing school board development and learning opportunities. And specifically, uh, this fall in our workshops, we're going to train on facilities and finance. And then goal number four, superintendent support, support of superintendents to complete these goals and conduct mid-year and end-of-year performance evaluations. Um, and also within that, assist superintendent in creating new board member packets. So, um, is there anything that we feel is missing or maybe want to take out? Or if we feel good about this, if we feel good, if you want them to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve 2021, 22 school board goals.
Okay.
Right.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, then we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then can I get a motion to, um, for item J, which would be the superintendent goals for this year?
Make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 superintendent goals.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
These are the ones that you handed to us.
Clear and precise, where your vote?
If there's not further discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And I get a motion for item K, which is contracted services with Hiawatha Home Care.
Can you get an explanation of that?
Hiawatha Home Care. Elizabeth, do you want to speak to that more?
Um, we have some students that have some very individualized nursing needs. And so they have some one-on-one care that we contract for because we can't provide that in-house.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve that.
First and a second, to add, approve contracted student services with Hiawatha for this school year. All right.
So this is that, have we, is this the same organization that lasted? But it's just continuation.
Yes. And has the basis based on student?
If there's no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion on item L, um, service agreement for mental health services.
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement for mental health services with South Central Unification Center. One second, one minute.
Uh, first and a second, any discussion?
It's the exact same process we talked about. They have students that have those needs, we access those services.
If there's not further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And I get a motion for item M about special education materials.
I make a motion to approve disposal of special education.
First and a second, any discussion? Only comments, I don't know why they want to get rid of the history of the U.S. from 1953. I mean, it's stupid. I don't know. That was interesting reading through that list.
Hannah, thanks for a long time.
There's a couple on there that I need to check. Um, all right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item N?
I'll make a motion to approve. No one, no.
Oh, wait, no, we're at item N. You skipped a whole bunch.
Oh, I've got an old agenda. Sorry.
And as in Nancy, that's all right. Um, so do you need a different, which one do you have?
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve 2021, 2023 agreement for vending meals.
Um, first and a, I don't care who we, uh, Adita, we'll go with it. First and a second. Um, I did have a question and it's probably a question for Elizabeth. Can you explain what the difference between this one, this agreement and the next agreement? Because they both had Team Academy in there somewhere. I was just kind of confused.
And I, of course, had to look at it a couple of times as well. I'm thinking, okay, wait a minute. They they are very similar documents. It's just two different requirements from the Department of Education saying this is the parameters of the agreement. But in addition, we're renewing a prior agreement. So it's it's kind of, um, developing that relationship or showing MDE. We've had a prior relationship with Team Academy. We would like to continue it. And then these are the overall parameters. So that's why there's two documents, so.
The first one, maybe one of the specific.
Yeah, so this is the contract for this year. And okay, because I couldn't figure out why.
They're very similar.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, so for item N, um, as in Nancy, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion or questions?
Is this for meals that we are providing other, other organizations in the community?
Correct. Then what we cater basically, yes.
We've had a, we've done this with Team Academy for a long time, provided their, their meals.
And anybody else is strictly this Team Academy or is it doing this for any other organization in town?
We have the opportunity to do it for multiple, we cater regularly. The right now, the what we're proving tied is the official contract with Team specifically.
And we've done great startups in the past.
Yeah, and and that one will be coming. Um, so that'll be another one that we do cater for. And then, um, Head Start, we, when they were offsite, we catered. But now that they're in-house, we're able to claim them under our site versus having a separate agreement with Head Start.
All right, we ready to vote on item? All right, all of the favors say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve item O? The agreement with Team Academy.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Charlie is the first. Grant is the second. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item P, which is the Head Start lease agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the Head Start lease agreement.
First and a second, any discussion?
Something I would just point out is a, um, nice job to Elizabeth and the team as they work through that. We did add some provisions regarding to snow removal and some other fees that if they want to have students on site on a day that we don't have students on site, they're going to have to support that financially. And so I appreciate her work on that, making sure that we are, um, taking care of our district finances. Because they they run the calendar they run. If we're not on site, that means it's going to come with a cost, so.
Thank you.
All right, if there's not further discussion, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item Q, which is our milk bid vendor. Now we've been caught up today.
It's my turn. I'll make a motion that we approve the milk bid.
Second. Who's the vendor again?
I don't know who's, who's cool.
That's right.
Yes, as we have only one bid, it'd be like double check that the price that they give to us is comparable compatible with the, you know, nation or something. It's not our.
Yeah, Elizabeth, will you speak to that? Because I know we, the answer is yes, we did do that. We did some market value checking, so we've got it. But for that.
I missed a question. I couldn't quite hear it. So I think was the question, just making sure that even though we had one vendor, do those prices seem reasonable? I think that was the question. And yes, we did take another look at that because we could have just said it was a failed bid and tried again. Um, but we did take a look and Ross felt very comfortable with the prices that they were proposing.
All right, if there's no further discussion or questions, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And can I get a motion for item R, which is our review policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the policies as reviewed 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, 306.
I just want to make one comment. Um, we were talking about that you had the longevity of the superintendent is usually in Minnesota. What was it, three years? And Waseca typically, our history is much longer. It's continued by N plus 10. I mean, yeah, we're really.
Hey, Katie, get back in the minutes.
I had a first and I have a second on that one.
Sorry.
A first and a second. But yes, let's continue that tradition.
That was neat to hear.
I think unfortunately that trend has, yeah, not Waseca, but statewide, it's, it's, yeah, it's, there's been a lot of movement in that position. All right, if there's no further discussion then, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And that is the end of our action items and almost the end of the outfit. Don't usually get that far. Um, upcoming items, our next work session is Thursday, August 5th. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, August 19th. These are our regularly scheduled meetings while we meet here in the second floor conference room. And I can't think of much else going on that. Nope. Um, I want to make a motion then to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All of the favor say aye.
Last meeting is 49. I don't have a lot of, or September will be.